Okay, we're gonna start the board meeting. Since the board vice president and president are not present, the first order of business would be for those members that are present to vote to have someone chair this meeting. So, it's Mr. Rogers.
I'd like to nominate Remy.
You can open the meeting first.
Yeah, hold in the meeting.
Could you open the meeting first?
Yeah. I just did. We didn't read the notice, but I think once we have a presiding officer, the meeting will read the notice. All right, Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Remy.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call? To appoint Mr. Remy as the presiding officer for this meeting.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski?
Yes.
Dr. Maksut?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo? Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Remy is going to be the chair or presiding for this meeting. The next order of business would be to take a motion, or if there is a motion, to permit Mr. Grillo to join the meeting electronically. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for Mr. Grillo to attend electronically.
A second.
Roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, questions, discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski? Dr. Maksut?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is four yes and one no to have the board vice president join electronically, which if we're looking at a majority of those present, that would be one, two, three, four, which then would pass. Okay, Mr. Remy, if you could read the statement and the mission statement.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10, 4-6, PL 1975, C 231, S 1, amended 2006, 670, S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, and location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press and the News Coaster on January 8, 2024 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 8, 2024. Mission statement: Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Roll call.
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Ms. Lesinski?
Dr. Maksut?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Ms. Ricks? Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Flight salute? Okay. Mr. Remy, the next item on the agenda for this evening?
Uh, Mr. Dribino, Superintendent Dribino, any presentations? Presentations?
No, not tonight.
Committee reports? Ms. Glassman?
I'm gonna report on both the Finance Committee and the Curriculum Committee in the absence of Dr. Penna. The Finance Committee continues to focus on the charter schools and their verification of residency. Just to remind everyone, we are still waiting to learn whether or not the Department of Education is going to approve the opinion of the administrative law judge that was against Asbury Park. We continue to be required, though we vote down payments to College Achieve. We had sent at the beginning of August letters to all of the charter schools reminding them that all students must be verified for Asbury Park residency before the beginning of the school year, or we will not make any payments. Another letter was sent out this week reminding them again, if by September 15th we do not have verification, we will make no payments on behalf of those students. The district continues to make available personnel and buildings for families to come and register and show proof of residency. As of last week, 20 out of 238 students from Hope Academy have been verified, only 14 of 117 from an academy charter, and only 19 of 285 have been verified from College Achieve. And I remind you, what's at stake is $13 million.
May I follow up on the Finance Committee report? I haven't seen the judge's decision from the administrative law judge, and I was wondering if, I don't know how many board members have seen it, if I can get a copy of it so I can read it? I didn't see it.
I can forward it to you, I received it, I'll send it to you.
You can forward it to me?
Yep.
Anybody else didn't get the administrative law judge decision? Thank you, appreciate it.
The Curriculum Committee reviewed several programs for the upcoming school year. Among them is the pre-K after-school program, the, uh, let's see, a McGraw-Hill immersive Spanish language program. The teachers reviewed several different programs and chose the McGraw program as the one most suitable for them. They thought that was the best program of the several that they reviewed. We approved, and again, all of this is approved for submission to the full board tonight for approval. A YMCA program to continue to provide counseling services at Bradley Elementary, Thurgood Marshall, MLK, and the high school. An MOU between Big Brothers and Big Sisters with the school district to provide three different programs. One is a program with Monmouth University for high school students to meet bi-weekly with Monmouth University students to get a flavor for what college life is like and help with looking at colleges, selecting them, applying for them, and other mentorships that the students would want during the course of the school year. Another program is through Jersey Shore Medical Center for students to go to Jersey Shore to see the various technical fields and careers and opportunities that are available. And the third program is a... It's the High School of Science and the Arts, I believe. That's my report.
I had a question. You mentioned the McGraw-Hill program. It's Spanish 1, or is there an expectation that we're gonna have like Spanish 2, or 3, or... I don't know what the expectation is.
Yes, we, um, right now, I think what's happening because we're a little shorthanded, but Spanish 2, Level 2 is one of the programs we're intending to bring into fruition in the next year or so. But yes, this one is the program that the teachers sat last year, at the end of last year, to provide Spanish, to use for Spanish instruction. But our intention is to offer Level 2 Spanish. And also, we're looking at, actually, I think we just started to put together for the next semester, a Spanish for native speakers course as well for our Spanish speaking students.
So my question is, when I looked at this, I said, "Yeah, you must have an idea of a program." But, you know, since you're already spending $22,771 on the Spanish 1, you're gonna add a Spanish 2, or you're gonna add another program with McGraw-Hill. You start to add up all those numbers, it reaches in excess of the threshold.
I'll look into that.
Because that's $44,000.
I understand, Barbara.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm concerned about.
Okay, I'll come back with some more information for you when I speak to the supervisor.
Okay, thank you. The other, I just had, part of your curriculum agenda is, since I don't, we don't see minutes, I would like you, if you could try to get minutes to us, that would be appreciated. There's number 21 on page B9, I think it's still B9. There's a Bloom Body and Mind. When I'm looking at the amount of time they're spending, 16 hours at $20,000, that's $1,250 an hour. I was shocked.
So this item is, the Body, Mind is the one... Let me explain, that this was placed on here by our Department of Special Services to provide services for our teachers for mental health. It is money that we have to spend, it's federal money that we have to spend by September 30th. And so, this program was brought to us by Ms. Carolyn Moreno for us to provide these kinds of services for our staff members.
At $1,250 an hour? That's incredible. I know you have to use the money, but that's insane. Well, there's one other item that I spoke to Mr. Dribino about on the agenda, the curriculum agenda, is the rubric for evaluations. I guess that's your agenda, correct? Or is that the superintendent's agenda? Oh, okay, I'll wait for that then, I have it.
Please. On the agenda and on the CNI report, it is said that you'll have after-school for kindergarteners. And I know, may I? I know last year, we worked really hard on getting after-school programs, and I think some before-school programs for all elementary school. Are we gonna offer that this year, or we're just focusing on kindergarten?
Yeah, after-school programs are being run by Boys and Girls Club for kindergarten all the way through 8th grade. And then preschool, because they do not cover preschool, we have to fund the preschool after-school program. And that's what you see on the agenda today. But we've already approved the Boys and Girls Club to do, provide after-school programs, so that's a ready motion.
So it will be offered at the Boys Club, not...
No, here, they'll be on site.
Oh, I'll be on there.
Like we did last year, they'll be on site. All the programs are gonna be starting around September 30th. We've already picked the dates, we've kind of coordinated with each other so that the pre-K program and the Boys and Girls after-school program for K to A will start at the same time.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, are we, are we doing that at the beginning of the year?
September 30th will be the start date, yeah.
Okay.
Just a little time to set up and get applications and everything in. But we've already sent out notices with the families as well, so they know. This is on, and it's on our website as well.
And, uh, Mr. President, I'd just like to say, following up on the Finance Committee's report, if anyone knows residents that are in the district that are going to charter school, and if they need to make sure they get to the buildings that handle those grades to make sure that they're registered, we're not picking on anybody, it's just a financial obligation that we have. And we wanna make sure that all the kids in our community are getting educated, whether it's with us or not with us, but if they meet the legal standard, please, come in, get yourself registered, give the attendance, I mean, the registration offices your information so we can make sure we get everyone on board. Those numbers were pretty, pretty light. And as the Finance Chair said, we're looking at $13 million worth of an obligation that either we need to know if it's gonna be accommodated, or how we're gonna deal with the financing for the rest of the school district with our other kids. Because we are in a financial district, I mean, financial issue with this district.
Uh, policy?
I can report on that. I'm gonna report on policies, all item approved, policy and regulation, all item approved for submission for full board approval, except policy and regulation first reading for code of conduct.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't hear what you said.
I'm gonna report on policy. All item was approved for submission for full board approval, except policy and regulation first reading for code of conduct.
I had a question about the new suggested update of code of conduct. Did you guys go through the new rubric that was presented?
Which one?
On the code of conduct?
What the code of conduct is for first reading tonight, in tonight's agenda.
Yeah, it's a first reading. I was wondering if you spoke about the rubric that was, a new rubric, or... I don't know, it's, was provided, we'd be using a rubric that's very specific since before 2019. I don't know exactly when it was approved by the board, and since it's been approved, often the updates for the mandates. But the attached, instead of the rubric, it's very specific that, you know, guides parents, children, and the administrators exactly what to do under whatever circumstance there is. It's very thorough, so there's no question as to what kind of recommendations there are and what actions you have to take depending on whether, you know, somebody had a cellphone, or there was a teacher that was assaulted. Or drug possession. This is what was attached to the, this was attached to the policy. The rubric is gone, and there's a bunch of Xs, and it's not... I have no idea what this is. And I was concerned that, this is now a first reading, I would suggest that it may be pulled from the agenda and try to figure out what exactly... This is confusing, it's gonna cause liability issues because nobody's gonna know what to do.
Ms. Lesinski, are you referring to the regulation?
Yes.
So the regulations are typically created by the administration superintendent. They are approved by the board, or reviewed and approved by the Policy Committee. But as it relates to, you know, specifics within the code of conduct rubric, I'm not entirely sure that the Policy Committee really plays a part in creating the rubric because it really is an administrative task.
Yes, it is an administrative task, but it's a mandated policy that the board has to approve. The regulation has to be approved. The regulation has to coincide with what the intent of the board's policy is.
Right.
And for years, this is a very... I would be concerned about liability with what this is. This doesn't tell anybody anything. Regulation is how you, you know, deal with disciplinary actions, whether it's slight, minor, whether it's a kindergartner or a high schooler, and what you're supposed to do. This doesn't tell anybody what they're supposed to do. It's, um, I, that's why I think somebody should look at this because it's not, I don't think it's to our advantage to have a regulation that looks like that.
Yeah, Ms. Lesinski, the only reason I raise that is because perhaps the questions are better posed to the administrators to the extent that there's any specific questions about that which is contained in the policy or the rubric, I'm sorry, the regulation or the rubric. You know, to the extent that there's any questions about the administration's, you know, objectives, concerns, issues, et cetera. I only brought that up because it's probably an issue that's better posed to the administration, that's all.
No, I understand, but the Policy Committee is the one that recommends it to be put on the agenda after review, and it has to be approved by the board. And I think that it would be better to wait and see what this is, since you didn't know it was replaced.
It's unfortunate that you didn't attend the meeting to bring this up during the meeting, so we can talk about it.
It is unfortunate, but was that meant to insult me?
No.
Okay.
That you just don't attend the committee meetings. And then you raised your question.
This is not about me, this is about our disciplinary code of conduct.
So we could have covered that.
For students, so I'm asking you to review it instead of having a first reading because it's not... I don't think anybody could think this is acceptable. If a teacher looked at this, what are they supposed to do?
Ms. Lesinski, there are more parts to the code, there's more parts. It should be more than that. This is actually a framework. It gives the levels of intervention and disciplinary responses. If you look on page 1. It gives each one, it tells you Level 1, what happens, the corrections. It gives, it's more of a restorative answer to our code of conduct. Instead of just putting a student out, there are things that the administration have to do, the teachers have to do. And this is all explained in this framework.
I understand you wanna put in PBSIS and things like that.
But it's not just PBIS. If you look through and you go through for each level, and what each level means, and what the infraction is, it gives a clear, concise, it tells you what happens when it's Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, Level 4. And in each of it, it's more of a restorative type of thing. We are looking so that students are not being put out, and they're not being suspended, and we keeping them in. But then, even if they do return, that we put things in place. It's making the administration, the teachers, making us more responsible than just putting a student out.
Well, this doesn't say put the student out. The rubric, the old rubric doesn't.
This is not a, this is a framework for progressive discipline. This is a framework, if you look at it, it tells you what happens for each level. Level 1, Level 2, and then it breaks it down to what those infractions are, from tardiness, attendance, academic disdanty, all the way down, those things that were in the other policy, we just made it so that it's more restorative and so that those that are, they know exactly what to do and what happens during those times.
It doesn't have an explanation in the boxes.
Yeah, okay, the explanation is up top. It's in the first couple pages, and it tells you exactly what happens during those... It's here, and you can see it clearly, and what happens at each level.
I appreciate your comment, and I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
I just don't know if I had to follow this, that I would know what to do. This is clear and concise, and it could have been updated by putting other items in each of the stages which would guide people when they're left with a decision to make. I can't understand what guidance I get from Xs.
But your, the Xs refer to the first part.
Right, but you have to figure out which X goes with what part.
Well, maybe it's the way it was, you know what, I'm looking at it, maybe the way it printed, it should have come down because you could have clearly saw, you should clearly see which level and what goes with it, and what, what framework, or what kind of discipline, what goes with that level. You can clearly see that, and what level, and what does that mean.
Well, for example, if a teacher's assaulted, that's a serious crime. But reading this, you could never, you wouldn't be able to figure out where you're supposed to go, XXX, S, all across the...
So what that is saying, what page are you on?
I think that it's obvious this would need further discussion. That's why I suggest that I get an understanding of what this is. But if, that's entirely up to the board, or the superintendent, the acting superintendent, whether they wanna remove it for further consideration.
So let me get this straight, on the access or the restorative process that we put in, is there someone that's going to manage that on the administration side?
Yes, sir.
So, right now, we're putting our foot forward to say we're not putting kids out, but we've come up with a structure that may be printed, may be printed inaccurately. Maybe the formation, and someone may not understand it, but there is an administrative component that oversees all these actions, and any of these things are gonna have to go through the administration?
Yes.
And if I can say, the old code of conduct, if we wanna start off with that, last year, using the code of conduct in the high school, we had 45 students placed on suspension and home instruction. Most of them were specialized students. So using that code of conduct is not conducive to what we wanna do here in this district. Therefore, the code of conduct has been adjusted to be more restorative instead of punitive.
Yep.
I think maybe you misunderstand what I'm saying. What I'm saying is it's not clear.
Yeah, I see the old one, and it's very direct, and it explains every situation. I get what you mean.
I think you're just misunderstanding what I'm saying. I don't understand it, and I understand...
If you compare it with the old one, it's very clear, and it gives you a step-by-step instruction and explanation into each different kind of category.
So, right now, like, the question is, is this understanding from the process it is? Right now, we're moving forward, is there, is there a way that the administration can adopt it to the format that's in the one Mr. Lesinski says he understands? Can we just basically do that? We could still keep it on the agenda if it's the same process, and then go to the second reading. If it's not clarified on the second reading, then we could take it off. But the point, one of the biggest points is, I know what we've been addressing on punitive actions, and I've heard it in the district for years. We have been putting kids out, and there was no follow-up or follow-through on the process that we need to address. That kids were not getting, well, they were being put out, and there was not an oversight as to how we were gonna correct these kids being out, and what we were doing to get them educated. So, you know, right now, if Ms. Lesinski doesn't understand that, maybe she can work with the administration just in the formatting of it, because it looks like they're aggressively trying to attack the problems in there, and it could be read better instead of just throwing the baby out with the bathwater. So if we could look to do that, I think we can at least go to the first reading, and then go into further.
So what I can do is, I can, so for example, where you see the Xs, would you like me to just explain, even though it says Level 1, and the Level 1 is up top, so tell exactly what Level 1 is, and just put it exactly in that box? Would that be better? So that you would know exactly what happens during that time, so Level 1. So, for example, that's, so depending on what the inappropriate disruptive behavior is, what happens during that time? So instead of it being an X, and you have to look up top, you want it explained right in that box? Would that be better?
I think it should mirror what this does. It's very explanatory, and you could add whatever you want, you could take out whatever you want.
Okay, so you would like it in the other format?
It's like a rubric in a classroom. You know exactly what's expected of you.
Okay, okay. All right.
I, I, Mr. Gallow, I just wanted to, to, uh, to add a little bit in terms of the financial disparity, and we were agreeing for a $50,000, you're assuming that was worth, yeah, the end of the state budget, and, and you're slightly ahead in the, um, and you're saying, uh, but.
Joe, can you speak up, please?
Sure. Can you get it out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I just wanted to make note that there were $250,000 in mental health support from a grant from the state, that Mr. Urbino reached out to the DOE on August 6th, and again, laid on further instructions from the DOE, but considering last year we got zero dollars in mental health support, and, but accomplished that we, uh, so every received $250,000 this year to help a kind of house. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Urbino.
You have a building, Mr. Urbino, it's a beating break.
So I'm going to report on buildings and grounds for Mr. Urbino. Yeah, at our meeting, we discussed several issues. First, we're looking to, we discussed opening up the playgrounds for our city students. In the city, the students have nowhere to play. We listened to the parents and the community, so we're looking for a way that we can open up the playgrounds at all three elementary schools, uh, and without accruing too much cost, but make it there so they have a place to play. We also, this is going to be my superintendent's report, but we also started the process of getting quotes, appraisals on three of our buildings within the district, the maintenance shop, parent center, and the ITC building. We did receive three quotes, which will, board will discuss later about how we want to move forward with possible sales of those buildings and the reusing of Barack Obama for those, uh, those places and also other activities. Is that it?
Can I ask?
I believe that's it right now.
Can I ask a question? The IT center, we went through this years ago, and the amount of money that it would take to move all that equipment, because that's the hub of our district, goes into millions of dollars.
So, uh, thank you for that, because it leads into what my superintendent report was going to be also, is that I spoke with Vinco Powell and several of his staff members, and we discussed the appraisals I got, and he, he congratulated us on getting ahead of the game with selling buildings, because the state is going to start requiring all school districts to start selling buildings. And, uh, so he said, what's holding you up? I said, one of the, one of the holdups is that we have to move, relocate certain buildings, and I talked about the cost of the ITC buildings, and he assured me that he's going to work to find money for relocation of these buildings, so it doesn't cost us as much or maybe nothing at all. So, uh, I just had that meeting on Tuesday, I believe.
My question procedurally is, the board has not talked about
You aren't kidding.
Selling the IT center recently. So I don't, whoa, 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 whoa. I understand, Mr. Wise, but the board has not talked about selling the IT center more recently. That was years ago, and I don't know how you went and got appraisals on buildings that we hadn't spoken about unless there has been a conversation amongst other people on this board to move ahead and do something without a full board discussion in a public session for transparency. That's a little upsetting to me.
So here's, here's the situation. Back in March, I gave my presentation. Part of my presentation was speaking about selling some of the buildings, our assets, in order to move into Barack Obama. So I, myself, went and seeked out someone to give us appraisals so we can go into closed session and discuss how, if and when, we would like to sell, at least we have the information handy, that we can make a educated decision on what we want to do moving forward. So that was not done by the board. I just felt we needed to get what our cost, what it would cost for us to sell the buildings, and now we have an option, something to talk about.
So, you expended funds that the board did not approve for appraisals? How much is that costing us?
It cost me nothing, zero.
Do you have the appraisals and who did them?
Yes, I do. They're right here, so we can talk in closed session. The appraisals I got didn't cost us a dime. I made sure of that, so it wouldn't cost the district any money. My job is to not only be an educational leader, but be, be financially smart with what we do with our funds. So I got these appraisals done, and it didn't cost us anything.
And I'll add to that for one second. Through the last several months, as you know, the finance committee and board leadership have been meeting almost weekly to, to discuss ways to reduce expenses and right-size the district, and we put everything on the table. That also included originally the lease for the central office, which the prior administration insisted was impossible to move and would be too expensive. If we don't look into these things and find out what the costs are, we have no way to consider our options. So I don't think that this was an irresponsible thing to do.
Okay. The only comment I want to make is, some of that is untrue, but four people can't crown themselves board leadership and take action without the full board voting on it in a public transparent meeting. You can't just go and do what you want.
Nobody was crowned anything. It was the finance committee, which is approved by the board, and the board leadership, and every month, we have reported out to this full board, every month, Barbara.
You have not mentioned anything about selling those buildings. Nobody gave you authority, the IT center?
I can, I can re, I can redistribute.
Okay, I'm not going to continue with this discussion.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's talk about this in executive session. We got to move forward.
Hold on, President. Uh, one of the things, we're talking about fiscal responsibility, uh, yeah, we, we've done some things, and I, and I let people know, the cost of a lot of these things that going on, and the fact that we want to also give our kids access to our playgrounds, we had, we have to spend almost $40,000 on a net to protect a, a, a property that's connected to one of our fields because of damage that's, that's going in. That's $40,000 of, of putting up a net. And if anybody reads the paper that goes on every day, uh, I think it's Jackson or Tom's River, lost $18 million in their district, and right now, they are charging kids after school to go home from sports events, almost $95 for bus transportation, back and forth for extracurricular activities that they've had. What I, we, we, we have to realize that a lot of things have been put on the table to look at right-sizeing this district, and one of the things was getting out of a lease that I think I know for three or four years of sitting at that podium, saying we should not have been on that Fourth Avenue building, having people sit in there that had no teacher contact, and we were spending almost $300,000 a year. And then, well, with, with maintenance costs and everything else, because we were paying for water damage, which I found out, but.
So generally, insurance hasn't been.
Right now, but we continue to have to, have to offset all these, uh, these issues and realize that we have to take action. And this is the problem. We, we keep waiting, and then we get taxpayers now that are coming to, to the, to the board meeting saying, my taxes are going up. Well, you know, I don't want to give the history on the fact that for years, we, we weren't even paying, you know, taxpayers weren't paying into it because the state was paying, but now it's at our table right now. So, people need to become clear that we have to, we have to solve these financial issues to keep these kids equally satisfied to any of these other districts like Coltsneck and anybody, anything else. And buildings that we may need to do and thinking outside the box shouldn't be seen as something demeaning or, or contrite. It's just something we have to start looking at, because we are getting people at, at knocking at our doors saying, my taxes are going up, my taxes are going up. I want to fix the educational system, get these kids educated, but also get a modest increases to the, the taxpayers that we have to deal with.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Rogers. I'd like to move along, go to public participation, and then we could go to executive discussion and discuss everything that we need to, so we all get a clear understanding of how we're moving forward. Is that okay?
Do you want to make a motion during this section?
About, why do you want to read that?
For, for.
You're going to read this?
Mr. Gallow?
Yes, President Gallow.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, I was a little unclear on, on, um, on what the next action is. Are we, uh, do you call the participation now and then?
Go into executive session, so we can discuss everything that we need to discuss, so everyone here has a clear understanding and have all their questions answered. Is that okay?
Yeah, he was. Is that doing public participation first?
That's what I just said.
Okay, I didn't hear, I couldn't hear that, I'm sorry. Thanks.
Thank you.
In accordance with the board policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with an opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question-answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officers and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the bill, may be removed from the meeting. This time, the floor is open for public comments.
Good evening, my name is Zina Somon. I reside at 1101 Bangs, and I am here to represent the District RPO again this year. Um, I'd just like to thank the board and the superintendent, acting superintendent, for giving me the opportunity to actually go into the schools, talk with the principals, and start setting up, um, a grand plan moving forward in regards to getting parental involvement in our school district. Just to give you a heads up, we are trying to create, um, a booster club at the high school, but we're looking for alumni from within Asbury Park to be a part of our district board. So if anybody knows, anybody that's interested, please have them reach out to me, um, but we'd like to start getting established and ready and up and running by, no later than the middle of September.
Good evening, John Scully, Asbury Park resident. I just wanted to make some comments and some questions. In the agenda number 11, regarding the policies and regulations, you have that they revise the new policies, regulations are attached to B11A through B11M, but those attachments are not on the agenda.
Zero.
So I was just wondering if the public can get copies of those. My next point is, I appreciate that the superintendent spent his time to get free appraisals on property. My concern is, and I'm not making any accusations, but when a board gets free services and it's not explained how those services were received, it could tend to lead to a quid pro quo, and that's dangerous for the board, and it's obviously dangerous for the, the, the district. And then my last point is, on page C5 of the agenda, so there's been recent discussion about the board wanting to sell real estate and real property, however, in your executive session notes, number five, you have acquisition of real property, which is conflicting to what I just heard in the last five minutes, that the board wants to sell property.
Okay, uh, I'm going to try to answer your questions before the next person speaks. The agenda item 13, there's a mistake on the agenda, and it should say acquisition and sale of real, or sale of real property. So that's a mistake on the item 13, a motion to go into executive session.
And to be clear, those items that are numbered in that item 13 are essentially reasons under the Open Public Meetings Act that a board or a public body can go into executive session. Typically, what happens is, when the board does go into executive session, it will call out each reason why the board is going into executive session, and if you notice, next to each of the numbered items, one through nine, there's a space for purposes of, of minutes, et cetera, that should be checked off as to each reason why executive session is being held.
As far as the sale of the buildings and the, uh, so, Mr., when, uh, I went out to see the maintenance building, because it was, they were talking about selling it, and I asked, I told Mr. Urbino that we need to get some understanding how much these buildings are worth. The fact that he went to a realtor to get some quotes is in no way a conflict of interest, because there are no realtors that will be used to sell these properties. That's number one. After seeing these, I instructed Mr. Urbino to get actual appraisals from an appraisal company, and I approved the requisition to do that. As state monitor, I have the authority to do that, number one. Number two, the, the board gives authority to the purchasing agent to, actually, it doesn't matter, state monitor, I approve that.
Mr. Schaefer, you didn't send a note to the board that you had taken those actions.
Well, that was going to be discussed in closed session tonight.
And you do know we did have some appraisals done before, correct?
Excuse me?
You do have the appraisals we had, had done before, correct?
Those are old appraisals. I saw an old one for the ITC for about two and a half, two point something million dollars. I don't know what it's worth today.
No, we had one on the maintenance building, I think, a year ago, I think it's been.
Well, again, you need up-to-date information. The real estate market changes all the time, and with that information, then the board can decide whether they want to go through with the sale of the properties or not. In order to make the decision to go through or not, you need the information on what the buildings are worth. Just to talk about it and use your estimations that you think the buildings are worth is not a, a good way to make a decision. That's why I'm having them get actual appraisals by certified appraisers in order to do that, and, but we're going to, it's not even, it's not going to happen yet, because I knew it was going to not happen after the board meeting, and it's going to be discussed in the closed session tonight. Someone earlier mentioned about the, the, the lease on the old administration building, not knowing about that was going to be canceled, and that was part of the budget that the board approved, that the lease was going to end this June 30th, but I also put some extra money in there just in case they had, it had to be a little bit further, so I put some extra money to pay for July and August, for July and August in the budget, just in case it would have to be extended and not end exactly June 30th. So, so that was discussed in, I believe, in public session, because it was on the.
No, I don't disagree with that. Yes, that was discussed.
Yeah, one of the things, and this is not haphazard, uh, stuff that we're looking at. Like I said, this is continuing, costs are going up, and the evaluation, this board, nothing gets done without approval as a board. We're going to have discussions, and it's not always going to be in front of the open public ballot, because we have executive session. So some of this information is, is stuff that we're just talking about, evaluating, looking at every option possible. Like I said, for three. Like I said, for three to four years, people talked about that building, and it got taken care of, and the public wanted it. And we got it out of our hands. We don't need it when we have such open space. So let's continue to give some observation to people that are sitting here trying to look at every option, so taxes don't go up.
I'm not sure if I have any minutes left on my three minutes, but hopefully.
You don't.
But if I could just respond quickly. One, I appreciate you explaining the executive session, and I appreciate Mr. Rogers explaining and the State Monitor. What Mr. Rogers just said is that nothing happens without the Board approval. It seems that something did happen without the Board approval, specifically.
Something did happen by the State Monitor who's empowered to do that.
As long as I'm on the roll, I want to talk about the playgrounds, because that issue has been coming up at every meeting. And everybody says it's going to cost too much, it's going to cost too much, but nobody knows what it's going to cost. So the other day, I asked the Director of Buildings and Grounds to actually come up with a cost of overtime of what it would take to keep the playgrounds open for the hours. So we'll have an actual cost, so we know, then the Board will know. This is what it's going to cost. Maybe they can go to the city to get some cost sharing. But until we have an actual number, you really can't know what's going to happen. So I hope to have that number within the next week or so, so then the Board can have it, and then they can make an intelligence decision about the playgrounds.
All right, my name is Danielle Braskom. I'm at 1021 Third Avenue in Asbury Park. And my question slash comment is concerning what Ms. Lizinski said about people, the Board only being four members making decisions. So my question is, how does the Board effectively make decisions when Board members purposely delay meetings and don't show up and delay the progress? So I guess that's my answer, no answer? Nobody has a response?
Good evening, my name's Stephanie Ackerman. I live at 1307 Fourth Avenue. I just had one, was going to, I'm looking for one point of clarification. Earlier, it was stated that Item Number 5, 13 of the Agenda on C5, should read acquisition and sale of real property. I just pulled up the statute. The statute does not say that you can conduct in closed session the sale of school property. It reads exactly as the Agenda is written, which is matter involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property with public funds, setting of banking rates, or investment of public funds, if it could adversely affect the public interest if the discussion of the matters were disclosed. By discussing in closed session the sale of school buildings, if those schools were fully populated by students, would effectively be the removal of a school. So I don't see that that falls in line with the purpose of the Open Public Meeting Act.
I believe there's another part of statute that when you sell things, you sell things in the same way that you buy things. In other words, if it's going to be under a certain price, you don't need Board approval. If it's above a certain price, you need to get public bidding, and the same thing goes with discussion. I don't know of any public body that would discuss the estimate of what the building is worth, so that the potential buyers would know. Oh, that's a low bar. I'm just going to do that. And you don't do that.
I mean, if the school has an appraisal, the buyers will certainly get their own appraisals, and it's open regardless.
Right.
But aside from that, I understand your point. Thank you. My question is, where in the statute does it say that? Where in the statute does it give the Board the authority to act in closed session on the sale of a school building?
The Board can go into closed session at any time to receive attorney-client advice, and I'll be giving attorney-client advice this evening on the sale of real estate. Thank you.
All right, I still don't see that that falls under the enumerated sections on the Agenda.
It may not fall under the Agenda, enumerated sections, but it's in the statute, and the statute trumps the Agenda.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a formal Open Public Records Act request for the specific statute that you're referring to, because by changing Item Number 5 in the Agenda, you're effectively trying to rewrite the statute that you're referring to here. So that's my only comment.
Open Public Records Act request is improper. It cannot seek information. It can seek documentation. To the extent that you have a request for a piece of documentation that is within the care, custody, and control of the custodian of records, you're welcome to submit an open request.
Thank you so much. I'll go back and look at the statute, because I guess the answer is you're not going to tell me what statute it is.
I don't know what you're asking. If you're asking whether or not a Board of Education is allowed to set a price or discuss a price of the sale of board property in closed session so as to be good fiscal stewards of the Board's money, that would be done in closed session, just like every other public body in the state of New Jersey discusses confidential information about the sale of property related to setting a price and negotiations related to that sale of property. That is appropriate for executive session. To the extent that you have an issue with the way that this Board conducts its business, you're more than welcome to submit a complaint regarding the Open Public Meetings Act violations to the extent that you think that there is one.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Milavero Gomez. I'm nervous. Basically, I worked here in the community for over 10 years. I'm an organizer, advocate about education. And I just wanted to say something. I don't know if you're aware that this is one of the nine richest countries here in the United States. And we always get the short end of everything, from what I'm seeing. And it's not fair to the children in our community. Also, I think it's important that we stay on top of what is occurring, actually, in the news and with our elections. We really need to be aware of what's happening, and we need to be on top of things that really make change for the children. And I hope everyone goes out and vote and votes for the right person, because it's about better for our children. And I want to say something, too. There's redevelopment in our community. We see a lot of redevelopment, but we're not seeing where they're investing for what our future is, which is our children. And this really bothers me, because our children are the future, not what's coming ahead now that I'm seeing. But change is good, and I'm hoping everybody realizes the purpose that we're here. And also, Ms. McKenzie, Sekensi. It's important also to the Board that when you make decisions, that everybody is included to know what's happening. You don't exclude people out. It's important, because we need to know the truth, and we need to know what's going on. And it's important. Thank you.
Good evening, Sheila Roselle, 1200 Jeffery Street, Asbury Park, New Jersey, 007712. Nice to see you in that position. You look good right there, Mr. Remi. Let's keep it like that. I am here, up here, because I heard you want to set the Dr. McNish Parent Center. Isn't that attached to Sheffield's? Is that a attached building or is it separate? I don't, it's for me. Oh, separate. So you were looking to put the parents in the Barack Obama, the Old Banks Avenue? Okay, have, well, I know back in the past, you talk about asbestos in the building. Is that going to be, like, taken care of? I know we don't, they say we don't mess with it, it don't disturb it, it don't... But we was in there for a while when we doing the dance, and you could not disturb it all you want, but it's still there, and you still have some effects from it. So we need to make sure that, I don't think Lime and Bleach should clean that. But I think really you need to make sure that it's safe, especially for parents, because y'all say y'all need a permanent involvement. Don't try to put us in that building and try to get rid of us, okay? Have a nice night. Bye.
All right, at this moment, we'd like to close public session. At this moment, I would like to go to public exec.
Sure. We're going to have to get a motion in a second, and we'll read the resolution as well as the reasons for going into executive session.
Can I ask for a motion to go into executive session?
May I make a statement before we go into closing executive session? I, my name is Jesse Ricks, by the way, and all week I worked on something and thought I would defend myself for things that were said at July's regular meeting. And then I thought, on my walk over here, I don't have to defend myself, because my record speaks for itself. My action in the community speaks for itself. The Presiding Officer of July's meeting, he belittled my name. One reason is because I was not here, not giving me the benefit of the doubt when my attendance is excellent. I've only missed two meetings in the two and a half years that I have been on this Board, and I have participated pretty much 100%. And I've always given my best. So I don't have to, thank you. So there is no need for me to defend myself. And to quote the Presiding Officer, he apologized to the public for coming out, wasting their time, because I send out texts asking folks to attend meetings, and I've always done that. Even when I was not on the Board, I always tried to get the community to participate, so it really wasn't a waste of time. And I stand on the work that I've done. I stand on my reputation. I stand on the love of this community. I stand on the love of these children. I've always given my best. I have a history of participating in public education the whole time I have been here. And I advocate for now, as I did for my kids who are in school, and that's a thorough and efficient education for all of our kids. And we have so much work to do instead of fighting among ourselves and belittling Board members. We might not agree with one another, or we might not agree with the process, but we need to respect the fact that we were all duly elected, and we have every right to participate. That's it. No need to defend my name.
Thank you for speaking, your heart, Mr. Ricks. Can I make a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Roll call. I'm sorry, what?
We are, we will, we have to stand, so. Ms. Lasman?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Mr. Remi?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
I want to ask for Mr. Grelle, right? Mr. Grelle?
Yes.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will make such discussion public when proper conclusion has been reached, now therefore be resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education will hold a closed executive session on this date, August 29, 2024, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purposes as outlined and described. Confidential matters regarding personnel, collective bargaining, negotiations, acquisition of real property or sale of real property or investment of funds, public safety procedures, litigation or contract matters, and as I said earlier, personnel matters. Thank you. The Board will be in executive session for approximately an hour. The Board will not be taking any action in executive session. At the conclusion of the executive session, the Board will return to this room, to public session, where formal action will be taken. Thank you.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Motion to resume public session.
I'll make a motion to resume public session.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Don't you have to do a recall?
That's exactly where I'm going. Ms. Brown, if you could take a roll call.
Ms. Lasman?
Present.
Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Dr. Maksud?
Here.
Mr. Remi?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Ricks? Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't need Mr. Grelle, do I? Mr. Grelle?
I'm here.
No, we're just, we're going back to public section now.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Mr. Remi, before you start with the Superintendent's Agenda, can we, Mr. Jervino, can we just separate, which one was it, on B6, Number 5? Just to put that separate, so we can make sure that that resolution is read properly before we vote on it? I think it's 6, Number 5 now. I know the Agenda was changed a little bit. What's the one we just discussed?
B6, 5B.
5A, well, 5B, yeah.
Yes.
We got to read it separately.
Okay, I would like to do a consent agenda per Pages B1 through B9, with the exception of B5, B6, 5A and B.
Can we just hold off for a second and do the minutes for the Board minutes that are on the Agenda? So we get through that. I didn't mean to rush that.
I'd like a motion to accept the minutes, A2, 11A and B.
Ms. Lasman?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
I have to abstain. I didn't get the minutes soon enough to review them. And I'm going to abstain, I'm going to abstain from the minutes, both minutes then.
Thank you. Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Mr. Remi?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
I abstain.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grelle?
Yes.
Thank you. Need a motion for the calendar?
Can I make a motion to accept the calendar?
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski? Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Mr. Remi?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to move to have a consent agenda for items B1 through B9 with the exception of item five, A and B on B6.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski?
I'm gonna vote yes on everything but I'm gonna abstain from number 10. I wanted a presentation for the Charlotte Danielson. I'm gonna abstain. And no on page B7, that's B7, number 10 is Charlotte Danielson. B7, number 12 is a no. And no on page B9, number 21 for the Bloom Body and Mine.
I have no for B7, number 12, no for B9, number 21, and you abstaining from B7, number 10. Thank you. Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Mr. Remi?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes, on everything except page B9, item 20, and that's for the $4,000 for convocation. I'm voting no on Bloom Body Mine, not to see $20,000, B9, item 21, and I will abstain from anything having to do with awards.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes, on everything.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion for B6, number five, A and B?
Second.
And B is pending attorney review.
That's your motion?
Yes, it's from the Mr. Javino's agenda and we separated it. The motion is B6, number five, A and B, but B is pending attorney review.
Okay. Just so the public's clear, the board is amending the motion on five B as written to add at the end of the sentence, pending attorney review. I just want to make it clear that this is an amendment from what's written on the agenda.
Anybody wanna make a second?
Yeah.
To have a motion for five A and B to amend pending attorney review for five B. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski?
Yes.
Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Mr. Remi?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Grillo? Uh, never mind. Yes, thank you.
Sir, walk-on motion that anybody wants to make?
Yes, I'll have it. Thank you. Also, before we vote on the walk-on, I have to make note that on page C2, number, all the page numbers changed. Hold on, I'm sorry. I get what you mean. Page C, page C2, letter 4C, to reflect from GHR to MOESC.
So you're talking about General Health Resources LLC?
Yes, we remove that.
Supposed to be at MOESC?
MOESC, we're gonna use their services.
Can we get a motion to approve the development and right-of-entry agreement between the Asbury Park Board of Education and the Asbury Park Tennis Initiative? Before we get the motion, Ms. Brown will read it out loud before we get the motion in a second. She'll read the resolution out loud.
I'm gonna read it. Be resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education approves a development and right-of-entry agreement with the Asbury Park Tennis Initiative. The business administrator and board attorney are authorized to take any and all actions necessary to effective, to effectuate this action of the board.
Motion in a second?
Who second?
Questions, discussions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski?
Yes.
Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Mr. Remi?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Thank you. I wanna make a motion for consent agenda for C1 to C.
Before we go there, can I make one more motion?
Sure. Yes.
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the acting superintendent to continue to obtain information on the feasibility of selling the board's real property.
That's not what we discussed in executive session. Real property is, we discussed specifics.
The motion, the motion's on the floor, so it can be seconded.
I'll make.
I second it.
I'll make a motion to table. She's making a motion that the board, could you repeat it?
That the board authorizes the superintendent, the acting superintendent, to continue to obtain information on the feasibility of selling board-owned real property.
And there was a second, but I'm making a motion to table that motion because that's not what we discussed in executive session and we had a consensus to do two items.
Okay, so there's a motion, there's a motion, there's a motion to table on the, on the floor which takes precedence over the other motion that's pending, so we should be voting on the, do we have a second on the motion to table?
Yes, I second it.
You seconded the motion to table?
I'll second.
Okay, so Mrs. Ricks seconded the motion to table which takes precedence over the other pending motion and so if, if Ms. Brown, if you could call the roll on the motion to table.
Ms. Glassman?
This is on the motion to table?
To table the motion to authorize this acting superintendent.
We have a motion to table on the floor.
Ms. Lesinski?
Yes, on the table.
Dr. Maksud?
No.
Mr. Remi?
Hold on. Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes, on table in the motion.
Mr. Rogers?
You don't understand, you're staying.
No, it's, it's the question, yeah, it's, I mean, right then.
I made a motion to table.
This, this motion.
If I can, Mr. Rogers, Ms. Glassman made a motion to authorize the superintendent to further investigate or take action related to gathering information about the sale of the board's real property. That motion was seconded, however, Ms. Lesinski made a motion to table while that motion was pending and Mrs. Ricks seconded the motion. A motion to table takes precedence over the motion that's otherwise pending and so now, Mr. Rogers, you're being asked to vote on the motion to table Ms. Glassman's or Ms. Glassman's motion.
Yeah, is there, I mean, is real property abstained in the?
I think the wording of her original motion is what got, is what the issue is.
It's, it's.
Yeah.
You just have to vote like that.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo? For the attorney.
Okay, the motion does not pass? I'm sorry, the motion to table.
Passed. Four, yes, three, no.
Let me change, let me change my vote to, uh, no.
Ms. Lesinski?
Motion is tabled.
Ms. Lesinski?
Okay, so with regard to changing a vote, you can change your vote during the penancy of the same board meeting without the need to get, have a motion passed to allow you to change your vote. So, Mr. Rogers, if you in public now on the record wanna change your vote, I would suggest that you, you.
No, you have to, it has to be a motion to bring the question.
Okay.
And I think it has to be brought up by the prevailing side, correct?
I have a question. And when you say real property, are you talking about buildings outside of the school building?
Sorry, real property, and I'm sorry, Ms. Ricks, real property means real estate.
That's school buildings too?
School buildings, that's what it means.
Okay.
Rather than go through the rigmarole of Mr. Rogers changing his vote, which is subject to challenge, my suggestion would be that Ms. Glassman make the motion again. But before you do that, can you?
Bring the motion back up again.
Why?
Part of Robert George Volo, I don't think once the motion dies, you have to bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay, you know what, you know, let's just do this, because I have a feeling the state monitor is gonna step in. Let's just leave it alone. The motion to table goes through and if, if Mr. Schafter wants to make, take state monitor action, he certainly can do so.
Before I do that, Ms. Lesinski, would you care to make an alternative motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that the board follow through with a new assessment for the maintenance building and that the board, the board authorize the superintendent and the business administrator and also that the board authorize the superintendent, the business administrator to take action and find out what the cost of, investigate the coverage of insurance for the payroll section of the ITC and also to get an estimate on what it would cost to move it and an assessment on the building.
Including the parent center building also?
Oh, yes, also the parent center. Also give authorization, get an assessment on the parent center.
To rephrase the motion, because, so, tell me if you agree with this, that the board authorized the superintendent, business administrator to obtain further information on the cost and, on the, regarding the sale of the maintenance building, the parent center and the ITC. This information include both appraisals of what the building is worth and the cost of what it would take to move. Would that, would that be acceptable to you?
Yes, and also the.
That's a separate motion.
Yeah, it's acceptable, but I also know we wanted to include, to see what the cost of the liability for the parent.
Ms. Lesinski, I just wanna caution you there just because of the, the nature of the issue to be investigated as it deals with cybersecurity, so my suggestion in that regard would be that we just authorize the superintendent to speak with the board's risk management consultant related to the concerns that we discussed in executive session.
That'll settle it, I agree with that. That's the motion.
Second. Just don't ask me to repeat that, because I.
Somebody's gonna have to, for me to record. Who seconded, Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. This is just for those three buildings and if there's any opportunity for any of the other school building that's, that has to run back.
Cut. Just the three.
We are authorizing the board to follow through with the sale of the maintenance building. And to further. And then to do the parent center and IT and then on the future about the cybersecurity. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski?
Yes.
Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Mr. Remi?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll have to go back to the audio to get all of it.
Now, can I have a consent agenda from C1 to C6?
I'll move it.
Second.
I do have a couple of questions though on this. So I know I had a discussion with the business administrator about C2, number four B, where between this resolution and the one from, I think it's a couple of months ago, it's a total of $65,000. So I was concerned about the threshold, but I had some advisement that because it's Esser funds that we don't have to worry about that. Is that a case or not? Or is that something that we need to concern about threshold? It's 65, our threshold is 44 with a purchasing agent.
I'm talking about C2 for B.
It'd be my position that, I mean, we follow the law regardless of where the funding is coming from. It's an expenditure of the district funds that were received from Esser. So to the extent that it does not, it, it goes over the bid threshold, we would have to, or, I'm sorry, the qualified purchasing agent threshold, we should follow the. As state monitor, I am acting as a qualified purchasing agent. I do have a certification, and the bid threshold is $44,000. I ask that were quotes obtained, because that's, it's in between the quote threshold and the bid, and I was, I was told that quotes were obtained for this. Now, I think I looked at them, but I'm not sure. But I'll double, but I'll double check that if, that if quotes were not obtained, they will not be approved. They're in, okay, so quotes were obtained, so it is.
Okay, so quotes were obtained.
Yes.
I was, I was, I was misspoke then.
Yeah, I'm a stickler for that.
Yeah. And, okay, and then on C three, number eight, we're adding another, another $18,000 to this consultant. And I just wanted to, just make a comment that between the two, these two consultants or whatever we want to describe the other company, we spent $105,000 in four months, so I just wanted to put that out there. I think that's quite a bit of money.
Which, what two consultants?
Bobby Ash and Callan Rannam.
Bobby Ash, he's like, on their.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Because a special ed consultant, and I believe the other one is also has something to do with special education. I was just concerned because is it just four months, or are we going to continue paying people? Because now we're up to 105, and I know we did eliminate a position. That's the only comment I have.
Ms. Glassman? There's a motion for consent agenda from C one to C six?
Yes.
Ms. Lesinski?
Yes, except that I abstain from one, B, C, D.
I'm sorry.
One, B, C, and D, and two, A and B on C one.
I didn't get the information in time to review, and I'm sorry. And also, C two, I'm going to vote no on four B, and no on C three, number eight, and yes on everything else.
You are abstaining from C one, B, C, and D, and abstaining from C two, A and B, and no on C two, four B, and C three, eight. Dr. Maxud?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Abstaining from everything on C one, which includes one, two, three.
All of page C one?
Yes.
If I may interrupt, before you continue, on C one, on three, item three on C one, if you do not vote in favor of this, you have to state your reason for the minutes. C one.
I don't have the information.
C three.
I didn't have a chance to go over everything, so that's why I'm abstaining on that.
Okay, thank you. That'll go in a minute. That's all, just, just that one item, every one, everything else you don't need to say why.
I have no idea what he's saying.
Just that, that one, item three.
Just the one, item three, is the only thing you had to explain about.
Everything else you just abstain or vote no, whatever you want to do without explaining.
So item three, you gave an explanation as, as why you.
Well, he says I have to give.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying, you gave it. You just gave it. That's the only one you have to explain, everything else, okay, vote the way you want.
One, two, three, then I'm abstaining. On C two, four B, I am abstaining. C four, number 12, I'm voting no.
And you're saying yes to everything else?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, everything.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes, everything.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot to mention College of Chief, no to that very.
Yes. You're saying no to any payments made to College of Chief?
We haven't done the bills yet, have we, Ms. Brown?
Yes, as part of the C section.
Oh, well, then I have to amend my answer, sorry.
Before you do that, the commissioner approved the administrative law judge's decision on August the 7th.
That's a shame.
Affirmed it.
I'm still going to amend my, I'm still going to amend my vote.
Just seeing that.
Can we get a copy of that?
They, they can cart me off, it's okay. I still vote no on all items to College of Chief.
I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting, if that's it.
I second.
All in, all in favor?
All in favor.
I hear the bell. Three, three. Nine, thirty-one. Me go there. It's a thirty-bill a show, easy. That's our thing. And we start, yes. How about? You got it?